The Planning and Zoning Board will come to order. First, we have the roll call. Pat, will you call the roll?
Mr. Russell?
Here.
Mr. Price?
Here.
Ms. Denny?
Here.
Ms. Gentlecore?
Here.
Dr. Miller will not be here. Mr. Stroud?
Here.
Mr. Thorpe?
Here.
And Ms. Stokes? Thank you.
Okay. See, Brenda's not here tonight. She's not gonna do the doodah. You're gonna do it?
You're stuck with me, Mr. Chairman.
What?
You're stuck with me.
We'll survive. We'll survive.
We'll take it. We'll survive.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay, and let's see. That gets us through the roll call. We're at that point in the agenda calls for public participations. Is there anybody here that wants to speak? About anybody, okay? Any matter? Okay, hearing none. We'll go back to the business of approving the minutes of the last meeting. We have before you the minutes of the last meeting, have had them. Are there any additions or corrections to that data?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes as written.
Thank you. Israel, second.
I'll give him a second.
Thank you. And we have a motion second. Pat, will you call the roll, please?
Mr. Russell?
For.
Mr. Price?
For the motion.
Ms. Denny?
For the motion.
Ms. Gentlecore?
For the motion.
Mr. Stroud?
For the motion.
Mr. Thorpe?
For the motion.
Okay. We're now ready to move into the quasi judicial part of the meeting. Is this where we have anybody, have people sworn in?
No, sir.
Sir?
This is only gonna be a legislative item, so there are no quasi judicial items on the agenda.
Okay. Notice I always ask, so, and I generally will. Thank you. Okay, we're going to talk about an ordinance tonight for feather flags. And I'll ask David to take us through the notes here, the summary and the and the notes for the legislation. David?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening, everybody. It's nice to be here. Yeah, what we have in front of us tonight is really a outgrowth of a request by the city council back in mid 2021. As part of the whole COVID emergency, the city's response to the COVID emergency, one of the things that the city did was we relaxed requirements and standards in several different areas. One of them was that we allowed the city temporarily did away with the prohibition of feather flags and feather signs. And there was, I'm sure some of the members of the board saw, there were several businesses that took advantage of that, and they were used sporadically throughout the city. You can see the feather flags. And so at the, I think it was the July council meeting, yeah, July 20th council meeting, the council tasked this board to consider a, I'll call it a permanent, doing away with the prohibition of feather flags. And I'll phrase it that does the city want to allow the use of feather flags on a permanent basis? Just another way of putting it. So, what we've done is, really what Anthony has done, is prepared the draft ordinance, and it's in your packet. And it really is, I'm gonna describe it as kind of an outline for a conversation for the board. You'll see that there is no staff recommendation here this evening. I typically will make a recommendation either for or against something. And the recommendation here this evening is just provide a recommendation to the council regarding the permanent use of feather flags. I will say that currently, feather flags, they're technically known as banners by our code currently. Banners are allowed for 30 consecutive days in a 12-month, in a calendar year. So, that's why you'll see them sporadically around the city now. But they're limited to that. Nothing else. What this does again is it would permanently allow those, so they could have them out there every day. Now, on page two of the staff report, there is 12, I'll call them guidelines. And again, remember, this is just a draft ordinance for discussion purposes. But what has been done is we've provided the board this evening with some thoughts and some considerations of ways, if the board is interested in making a recommendation for the use of these on a permanent basis, these are some thoughts and some ideas that can be discussed and included in an ordinance that would move forward to the city council. Now, the rest of the packet, the following page after the actual agenda cover is the resolution from 2021 back in July. This is a council resolution. And this is the resolution where they authorized the use of the banners, feather flags. And the important part is in section three of that resolution. And I want to read that to you. Says within, it's on page two of three of this, of Resolution 2021-10. It's down at the bottom, section three. "Planning and zoning board evaluation and recommendation." This is really our marching orders, so to speak. "Within 120 days from the effective date, the P&amp;Z board shall evaluate and recommend to the city council whether to amend the city's sign code to allow feather flags on a regular basis. If the recommendation is to allow businesses to use feather flags, the planning and zoning board shall recommend the terms and conditions by which such flags will be allowed." And that's what you have in the draft ordinance, is terms and conditions that we're suggesting the P&amp;Z board could consider. And again, I don't wanna the P&amp;Z board can recommend to the city council, we don't agree. We don't want feather flags used on a permanent basis. That's certainly within your prerogative. However, if you do decide that you'd like to make a recommendation for, we've prepared some ideas and thoughts for you. So, and again, I usually conclude with a recommendation, but I think we're, as a staff, we're kind of taking a hands-off, and this is really a decision for the P&amp;Z board to make at this point. Anthony, did you have anything to add to that? Okay. Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna turn it back over to you then.
Mr. Dickie, have you had any recommendations from the public come into your office, or meet you on the street, or give you input about the feather flags?
Not since, not since the, not recently, I'll just put it that way. I'm gonna say maybe two years ago, there was some discussion with a couple of property owners. Actually, the owner of Southern Charm at that time had a real interest in feather flags. We actually, I had actually sat down with him along with Mr. Morley, and we have kind of negotiated a the terms of something that could be put into an ordinance and brought to the council for their action. It really never moved past just discussing it, and it just, it died essentially. So, and again, that was about two years ago. Since then, no, I haven't personally been involved in any conversations with business owners about it.
So, during this time, we've had prefer use of the feather flags. And so, I guess the controversy, if there ever was one, went away. I mean, they were there and were used. I guess the next question is, did any other controversy arise during the interim about the appearance, or the need, or the use of the feather flags?
I've not had anybody directly complain about the use of feather flags, or how they appear. No, I've not, no.
Okay. Then then I'll ask the board, do we wish to consider recommending the continued use and therefore an ordinance of feathered flags? Or to recommend no further flags and have done with it? I'd like to hear some discussion on that. I'll start over here with Nancy. Do you have any comments to make about that?
Honestly, I'm not a fan of them. I think they're distracting when you're driving down the road. But I can understand, you know, as a business owner, you're trying to get the highest visibility. I noticed one of the items is, they have to be taken in at night, and they're not. I mean, you know, you see them if you drive at night or in the morning. I'd like to hear other thoughts on it. As I said, my initial instinct is I don't particularly like the way they look, but there's a lot more to consider than how I feel about the way they look.
Okay. We'll come back to you if you have
Okay.
discussions, stir up any new thinking. Mr. Price, do you have any comments?
Yeah, I have a few. You know, a few years back, there's only two people on this board that were members of the board at that time, and I don't think there's anybody on city council that was on city council at the time that we dealt with the flag ordinances and worked through all that. We spent a lot of time, a lot of effort, coming up with what we thought was a good program for flags. And I'm a little bit confused about why this is even an issue today. What the board, what the city council's motivation is for even proposing this. I mean, I'm really confused about that.
Yeah, my, and Anthony, please jump in anytime you'd like, but my, I think my response to that would be, as I mentioned earlier, it really was an outgrowth of how the city could assist our businesses during COVID. And one of the things, as this board knows, is signage is very important to business. And because there was such a downturn in the economy, and everybody was staying home, any way that we could help our businesses, the city was reaching out, was doing that. We actually cut all of our permit prices in half, all of our application prices were all cut in half, so we were doing whatever we could. And this was one of them. So, when the original resolution that the council passed authorizing this temporary use was getting ready to expire, it became a discussion item again. And I don't recall specifically which of the council brought it up, but I think there was consensus amongst the council, hey, this is, we at least need to have a conversation about this. There, as I recall, there were several business owners at that council meeting that evening, and they spoke, obviously spoke in favor of it. They felt like it was something that helped their businesses. So, that's really the, I think it was just the council was, at a minimum, just wanting to have further conversation about it, because, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. We spent a lot of time on the sign ordinances, on the sign ordinance, and we worked really hard to get the signs cleaned up and made presentable for the city, take care of obvious problems presented by flags. And you know, I understand, I understand how the businesses feel about exposure. But also, I think that we as a board should be concerned about the city and the appearance of the city. And I'm not a fan of the flags, particularly being left out, like you say, 24/7. You know, it just feels to me that we're working really hard to make this the city of Cape Canaveral, not not a carnival. And I just, you know, the flag, it feels to me like the flags, what we have written in the ordinance for flags right now, for the feather flags, is adequate, and I don't see any reason to change it. And that's all I have to say.
Okay. Stephen, we'll ask you if you have any comments.
I have just a little bit. I think the rules are well laid out, but I think enforcement of those rules is a whole nother ball of wax here. I don't think we'd have anybody driving around on the weekends and penalizing people for having those flags out. We go further up the road into the next community, and we'll see them. We go to other places, and we see them. Problem, or they seem somewhat accepted in those other communities. But out of respect for the past decisions that were made on these flags by the council and the work they did, considering that, I think I could find with not allowing this.
Okay, we'll come back to you if we need to.
Hi.
Hi. Susan, do you have any input?
Yeah, I have some questions. So, when you did all this hard work before, what were the issues, the problems with the flags? I mean, granted, I'm not really a fan of the appearance of them either, but I do understand the businesses' things, but what were the issues that put the ban on them in the first place?
Well, there wasn't any specific ban on them in the first place. What led up to it, and this is my remembrance, and I'm willing to be coached about it, we worked very hard to clean up our city signage, to make it look attractive, to make it obey certain height restrictions, to make the signage have an orderly support appearance, whether they're pole signs, or whether they were what we call, what was that term we used?
Hyalns or ground signs?
The monument sign, the ground sign. And it worked pretty good. Things were doing real well. City took a nice, clean look. And then, when COVID happened, the merchants felt the need to stimulate business, and this was a quick way to do it, with feather flags. They're minimal expense, easy to construct, easy to put out. And they are visible. They stimulate just by the movement of them, driving around, along. They attract eyes. And let's face it, signs are the linkage between a merchant and the public, and therefore, business. So, they have a strong affinity for signing, signs. The more signs, the better. We've got one gentleman who likes more, more is better. So, that led up to it. When COVID happened, the feather flags proliferated, and there was a need to do something about it, whether to prohibit them, or let them be there and regulate them. And the city chose a middle course. I think I heard a while ago, there was a 30-day limit on a feather flag, but I don't notice it in her, I didn't notice it in the summary.
Yeah, it's not in the summary, but that is correct. There's a current, yes, thanks, that's perfect. That, there is in the ordinance, banners or feather flags are allowed 30 days per calendar year currently. So, there is some allowance for the use of them.
So, they kind of crept in, and then the city gave a this temporary ordinance. You know, I read it, but I don't remember a time limitation even on the temporary ordinance.
No, there really, there really wasn't until the planning and zoning board was able to consider it, make a recommendation, and then we bring it back to the council. I think at that point, then the council can either say, you know what, we're gonna go ahead and just discontinue, go back to how it was, or we're going to adopt an ordinance, and we're gonna, we're gonna allow the continued use of them. So, it's really, the timetable is really, we gotta go through this board.
But the only time limitation in the temporary ordinance, temporary resolution, I should say, was they displayed only during operational hours.
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry. Yes, that is correct.
And there wasn't any 30 days or 60 days, any limitation per calendar year.
Right.
So, they did put a time limit of operational hours in their
Yes.
temporary resolution.
Yeah. And, Mr. Chairman, I will, I know a couple of members of the board have met, has discussed this, and it is. Enforcement of that is difficult, because we have a core hours, 8:30 to 5:00. We do have a part, a staff person that works until 6:00 or 7:00, depending on the day, and he does work part of the day on either Saturday or Sunday. But there's no consistent presence of a code enforcement officer seven days a week during the operating hours of our businesses. It's just, we just don't have the staff to do that. So, enforcement is gonna be problematic, whatever we do.
We don't have enforcement seven days a week of the Airbnb either, but that's another story.
Yes, please.
We'll come back to that later. It's, it won't go away, so it'll, it'll be there. Okay. So, I'm still reaching for the need to limit the time these things to be used. Did you have anything else you want to bring forward at this time, Susan?
Oh, I just, I wanted to hear what some of the issues were in the past, and again, I do, I'd like, does the feather flags take away from the clean look, right? So, I'm not really thrilled, but I'm betting businesses have, you know, flourished without the feather fans for less than, you know, for 30 days or less during the year, so.
Well, okay. I too have lots of questions, but I'm gonna save them, so we get more board input and vocal input.
Yeah. So, I agree that the code enforcement's gonna be an issue. I agree that, you know, they can be, I don't want Cape Canaveral to be Cape Carnival, right, because you've got, everybody's flagging everybody in to do that. Yet, I do also understand the business owners wanting to be able to attract people in as well, so. I'm a very empathetic person.
Well, just a thought about that, when we were working through our, all that we worked through with respect to signs, we have a pretty liberal sign ordinance just for signage, without, no feather flags, just signage. And the business community had tremendous input to writing that ordinance. We filled this chamber up, and even had a deputy here to keep order, because discussions would get vigorous.
Yes.
And the business community had great input to the present clean, I'll call it, sign ordinance. They didn't get deprived of anything that was within reason. Having said that, any merchant can come in there and make a case for a specific grievance. Okay.
Okay.
They've had good, they've had good input to the present ordinance, is the present signage, is the point I want to make.
Yep.
And Mr. Thorpe?
Being a small business owner here in Cape Canaveral, I think the flags are effective. Our office is next to something.
What's your word, expected or respected?
Effective.
Effective, got it.
And I'm just thinking, I'm kind of torn, because as I wrote down A18 today, I saw some flags that were in bad condition, and they looked bad. They were not but I think if properly kept, and I don't personally have a problem with them, they're good for our businesses. Some of our businesses sit back, and the flag being there with the tourists coming, it helps. So, I'm kind of torn right now about that, but I think if we could come up with something possibly dealing with more of the condition of the flags, because some I saw, you know, they were torn and bent over, and it is an awesome. So, I did that, but I think from a business perspective, you know, it works. And tourists come to the city, they see, you know, breakfast, plaque, they come in, and they stop in my office also. So, it works for us. I don't know how the other businesses feel, but I would hope that we could come up with something where the businesses can possibly, you know, be in better condition. But just eliminating it all together, I think it would hurt us.
You think feather flags are pivotal in the success of the business?
I don't think, it depends on what you're, you know, what business you're in. I mean, for Southern Charm, and I'll speak for them, because I know them. The fact that they have a sign there that says breakfast, tourists drive by and they come in. Our sign says real estate, someone's looking for vacation rentals, they're driving by, they'll stop in the office.
Don't you have a sign, a monument sign out that advertises your business?
Yes, sir, we do, but it's just something about feather flags, the way they sit on the highway. People look at them. And us being in the community, we live here, so we may not look at it the same way that a tourist may look at them. But I know they're effective. But I know something has to be done. I mean, I agree with that, because they can be an eyesore if they're not taken care of, so I kind of get it. I don't know where the happy medium is.
What is your thought about taking them in at night?
It's a pain.
For the merchant?
It's a pain for the merchant, because if I'm showing property, and I'm hitting back late, and the flag is out from, you know, 9:00 in the morning, I gotta come back, and I gotta take the flag, and, you know, everything. They were doing it, putting it in, putting it up, taking it down, and it's somewhat of a pain. I don't like doing it. But I'm just trying to figure out what is the best way to, you know, satisfy, you know, the city and the businesses, because they do work. I don't like bringing them in. I would rather, if I could keep them out there 24 hours, that would
Well, you're saying you're trying to figure out the best way. You're in a great place to talk about that. What is the best way? You're in the best place in town to talk about it.
Well, I think that the problem I have is the condition of the flags, you know. I did see some tonight just dropping up and down. They were in bad condition, and they looked bad. And maybe if we could do something with, maybe look at more of the condition that the flags are in, as opposed to just eliminating them all together, then I would like to hear what other businesses think about it also. Because I know for Southern Charm and myself, it works for us.
Okay, fair enough. If all the flags were in 100% new condition, then what would your position be?
I would want them.
But, okay, fair enough.
Just for clarification, I don't think we're here talking about eliminating those flags altogether. We're talking about an amendment to an existing ordinance. We're talking about an amendment to an existing ordinance. So there is an ordinance that provides for the display of those flags and that type of thing. Uh, we're, we're talking about amending that.
Is there, is there an ordinance on the books right now that provides for feather flags?
No.
Yeah, are, no?
I don't think so.
No, no, the ord, the ordinance currently prohibits feather flags. As David indicated, during, um, the initial phase of COVID, the city council suspended the enforcement of that prohibition to allow business owners to, um, install feather flags. And once the COVID emergency expired, the council decided that, the council decided that, um, it would continue to temporarily suspend enforcement of the current code that prohibits feather flags. Until such time, they receive a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Board, at which point council will decide whether to, um, leave the current prohibition in the code or adopt an ordinance officially authorizing feather flags permanently going forward. So we're only, right now, only under a temporary enforcement suspension. There's no code on the books that authorizes them, so...
Yeah, and, and Anthony's correct, there is a, if, if you go under the list of prohibited signs in the city, feather flags is, is, is one of them. But as I mentioned earlier, there is an allowance in the code that allows the use of a banner, i.e. feather flag, for a period of 30 consecutive days every calendar year.
But when we talked, we had that discussion about banners. Banners were ta, were talked about in terms of the banner, the type of banner you pull across the, uh, thruway.
Yeah.
Across the street, overhead.
That, that is also a banner.
A waving banner we talked about, so, just, just be clear about that. A banner was across the street, stretched over the overhead, and there is some allowance for that.
Yeah, if you look at the definition of a banner in our sign ordinance, it, it, it references a feather flag. So that is kind of a subset of the banner, the larger banner umbrella. Let me read this section of the code, this is in, um, this is in our ordinance, and I'm, I'm just gonna read it to you. And this, this is addressing banner signs, it's a condition of the use of banner signs.
It said the present code at this time?
This is the present code, I'm gonna read to you. "A maximum of one banner sign may be erected on non-residential property, commercial."
That's not a feather flag we're talking about, you, you said banner sign.
A banner, remember, a feather flag is a type of banner sign, okay? "On non-residential property not to exceed 96 square feet, and on residential property not to exceed 12 square feet. A banner sign may be erected," again, a banner sign, i.e. feather flag.
No, it doesn't say that.
It doesn't, but if you go to the defin-
You're interjecting that.
No, I'm not, if you go, if you go-
I just wanna make the point that feather flags got their nose under the tent,
Mm-hmm.
Under the guise of a banner flag, and they're not the same as we talked about them.
They're, they're not the-
That's, go ahead.
They're, I, I agree, Mr. Chairman, they're not the same sign, but I don't have the, do you have the, uh, sign ordinance? Or can you get it? Well, I'll ask Anthony to read the definition of a banner sign, so that'll kinda clear this up.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Okay, so let me finish this. "A banner sign may be erected for a maximum of 30 consecutive days on non-residential property, and a maximum of 14 consecutive days on residential property, one time during any calendar year." So that's in the code now. A banner sign must be-
And that was to take in consideration for yard sales, and that, that was part of the conversation.
Well, yeah, that's-
Go on, go on.
Okay. So that, that's what I wanted to read to you, that this, 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 this allowance is in the code right now. And Anthony, do you have that definition for banner sign in, in front of you?
Uh, yes, uh, banner sign means any sign having the characters, letters, illustrations, or ornamentation applied to cloth, paper, or fabric, including animated, rotating, and/or fluttering vices. Feather signs, flags, and pennants, which do not comply with the definition of flag or pennant under this chapter, but excluding government flags for purposes of this chapter, designated to attract attention.
Okay.
Wait a minute, re, read that again, that looks like some kinda milk crept in, that's very soft, read that again.
Okay, banner sign means any sign having the characters, letters, illustrations, or ornamentation applied to cloth, paper, or fabric, including animated, rotating, and/or fluttering devices. Feather flags, I mean, sorry, feather signs, flags and pennants, parentheses, which do not comply with the definition of flag or pennant under this chapter.
Wait, wait, that, that's a glance off, now, grind that in, what, 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 what are you saying there?
Well, it, it includes, um, flags and pennants under the definition of banner sign. If the flag and pennant, or pennant, does not comply with the definition of flag or pennant under this chapter, so it's, it's, it's some sort of flag that doesn't comply with the definition of flag.
Right.
Right.
Right, I thought that's what it said, it says something that it doesn't say.
Well, what, what I can say-
Well, talk about all that, go ahead.
Okay, I'd like to make just one more comment, Mr. Chairman, thank you. The, the, how we, how we, the city, code enforcement, have been applying this language is we do allow a business to have a feather flag for 30 consecutive days every calendar year. That's how we've been implementing, that's how we've been operating, and that's our, that's our SOP, um, for, since I've been here.
Under the, under the framework of a banner.
Correct.
Ordinance.
Yes.
Yeah, and, and I'm neither for or against, I'm just asking questions here. And what we're doing is we're tracking down the facts. The facts are that we have something in our ordinance, we need to know what it is. And then once we get that in mind, and we'll have a discussion, we'll go forward and say, now, let's talk about the main point. We've got to work, to consider a recommendation to the council on whether to allow them or not. That's, that's the crux of the matter. If we consider the, uh, that we will allow them or recommend allowance, then we take the next step and recommend the ordinance to regulate them. So the first things first, should we or should we not allow them? And before we make that decision, I think we ought to have some more input from a wider, uh, audience, again. But that's just me.
Can I say one more thing?
Hmm?
I think, I think it's a clear difference between a banner and a flag. They're, they're two totally different things, and I don't think that definition distinguishes them properly. And every business is not gonna use a, a flag, because it doesn't work for every business. I really think that it's, it's a condition that they keep the flag in, you know, just, you know, I know there's some problems as far as how they look, but I think if they're kept up, I don't think there should be a problem.
What do you think about the number of them? One per, one per business?
Right, correct, because I saw, I think it was the 7-Eleven, they had like four, a couple businesses over there, they had consecutive flags, some of them were up, some of them were bending over, and it did look pretty bad. But a lot of businesses, as long as they're kept in good condition, they, you know, a lot of businesses don't use them. So I don't think it's gonna be as big as a problem, but they're as a problem to make it happen.
So what I'm hearing is the, the, the larger, the largest problem with a flat, a banner, a feather flag is the number of them and their appearance, and the appearance of them. That's, that's just two that I note down, we're gonna come back, and we're gonna dig under those and come up with the right way to go. But I'm hearing that's, that's two that we're gonna have to come back and wrestle to ground. What they look like, and how many there are, and, and one business doesn't need 40 or 50 of them. So, okay, uh...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir?
Before you wrestle that issue to the ground, um, let me just advise the board relative to the maintenance of signs, that there's currently a code on the books already, in the sign code, that provides for maintenance and notice of repair.
Very good.
Okay, so, you know, it says, "All signs shall be erected, placed, and maintained in a state of good, good and safe repair. Damaged signs shall be removed, repaired, or replaced." Um, it also talks about, um, yeah, all signs must be maintained in a vertical position. So to the extent we have some feather flags out there today that, you know, are, are tattered, are not vertical like they're supposed to. For example, you can see a depiction of a vertically installed feather flag up there on your screen. There currently is a code on the books where code enforcement can take the appropriate steps to address the maintenance. So I just wanted to bring that to the board's attention. That's why you do not see in the draft ordinance a maintenance provision, because the provision I just generally talked about applies to all signs, including feather flags and banners, et cetera.
Thank you, thank you so much for that, uh, that means that we don't, we've already wrestled that one to the ground.
Yes.
Maintenance of the sign is, it's settled, they gotta be kept up, go ahead, Dave.
I, I just wanted to point out to Mr. Chairman one item, that the definition of a banner sign, is it a banner, excuse me, is a fe, a feather sign, is it a banner, what exactly is it? One of the things that Anthony included in the draft ordinance, this is the new ordinance that, that's being proposed or suggested, on page two of six of the, of the, of the ordinance, you'll see there's a definition of a feather sign. We currently don't have that, so this is a clarification, and this will bring a little clarity to, to the issue, what it is and what it isn't. So I just wanted to point that out to the board, that that's, that seemed to be in a, a common thread some, through some of this discussion.
Very good. Can I just get a little clarification? When you read the definition of a banner flag, did I hear you include feather flags in that?
It says feather sign.
Feather sign?
Right, and, you know, I, I agree that the definition of banner may not be so artfully presented, because it encompasses, I mean, everyone thinks of banner, you're thinking something spread, you know, across, you know, normally, these days, think of a feather flag as a banner, I mean, feather flags have become, if you can correct me if I'm wrong, a category in and of them, of itself, since, you know, the sign code was last touched in 2009. So the intent would be if the city council and the board would make this recommendation to permanently allow feather signs, is to actually define it as a separate category, take it out of the banner definition. So now feather flags stand on their own, pardon the pun.
You think that's what this definition does?
This definition, uh, does, does that. It defines, um, it defines feather sign, now, um...
Feather sign, okay, we'll try to get our nomenclature right, let's call them feather signs.
And then we add a little tag at the end of the definition, that this definition does not include a banner sign. So trying to distinguish between the two.
I'm, I'm also gonna add too, Mr. Chairman, if you look at the table 9496-1, which is at the, it starts on the bottom of page two, and this is the, all the meat and potatoes of the sign ordinance, what exactly these, all these different signs can do, how big they can be, all this stuff. Well, if you go to the end of, the bottom of that table, which is actually on page four of six, you can see that there is a new category included in this table called feather sign. And this is a, um, this, this really, again, adds some, some clarity, distinguishes it between all the other types of signs that we have.
Wait a minute, um, I'm confused, but I get, I'm, that's, I'm easy like that.
All right, right.
So you got this, uh, 92, 94-6, feather signs except as authorized. Okay, so we're gonna talk about some feather signs with these tables that defines sizes, heights, and, and so forth. Then you come down to the end, you got one row that says feather signs, and you reach out through there, and they're prohibited on certain areas, and, uh, and, and allowed in two areas.
Correct.
Okay, so why do you have feather? These are prohibited signs and features, that's the name of the topic. The following signs and features are strictly prohibited. And then there's some stuff there that we don't have, we don't have on, in this document, those three dots, so, there's other data elsewhere, right?
Well, if, if-
What are we prohibiting? Because I'm gonna come down through here, and unless otherwise directed, I'm gonna think in terms of, yeah, we're gonna prohibit all these.
Well-
I don't think that's yet.
You have to remember what these, the, the feather flag has, there's, these are in columns, these are part of the table, and they, and they, and they correspond, at the top of the, at the top of the table, the columns are the res, R1, R2, R3, and then our commercial and industrial, and public recreation. So per this table, a feather sign is not allowed, it's prohibited in our three residential zoning districts, R1, R2, and R3, they're prohibited, they're not gonna be allowed. Whereas in the next category, the column, C1, C2, and M1, they are allowed per section 9486, so 1 through 12, those, those specific guidelines, feather flags have to follow. The ones that are allowed in our commercial and industrial districts.
Okay, so, uh, help me out here.
Okay.
I'm at the top of, I, I'm in page two of six,
Mm-hmm.
Where it reads section 946, prohibited signs and features.
Mm-hmm.
The following signs and features are strictly prohibited. And it says feathered signs, except as authorized by this section.
Yes.
And they're laid out, they're authorized only in certain areas.
Correct.
Okay. So that's why you had, but you come down and you define feather signs within a feather sign ordinance. Okay, I would've thought that. Need to think about, need to think about that, okay. Don't, don't go any further, let's, let's don't use that area. There were a couple of other things I wanted to ask you about this table. Uh, down on page four of six, and go down to sentence three, or parenthesis three, "Shall only be displayed during the operational areas." So, um, for a continuous home, well, we're seeing that out, they're out 24 hours a day right now. And this sentence says, "Shall only be displayed during the operational hours of the subject business." Well, if it's a home business, what is that?
A home, a home, if, if you remember, if we go back to the table,
Yeah.
The residential columns, R1, R2, and R3, you can see right up to the top of that page, they're prohibited, so they're not going to be allowed as part of a home business.
Okay, got it. So that's the way that, that, uh, logic works?
Yeah.
Okay. Then sentence four, parenthesis four, "Shall be securely attached to a freestanding and removing, removable mounting pole." That mean, you're talking about the banner or the cloth itself, it has to be securely attached.
Yes.
But what I'm thinking is substantially secured to the ground and weighted to resist, resist movement. Okay, I guess that works, there's several ways to do that.
Mm-hmm.
All right, that, that cleared those, which brings us back now, I'm gonna, uh, ask each member of the board if they've had any new thoughts, any new gasoline- any new gasoline you wanna throw on the fire. And I'll start to my right with Susan. Lift.
Oh, wait a minute, you're, we're jumping out of...
Yeah, 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 I'm confusing myself even.
Yeah.
So let me just back up a minute.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I'll tell you what, when I first came into this meeting, you know, I read everything and I saw the restrictions were good, you know, one per business. And it seemed like kind of a fair, you know, to let businesses make their own discussion, make their own decisions, whether they want one or not, but have some restrictions so it's not overly obnoxious. But... Yeah.
So you're beginning to soften on your original position, is that what I mean?
Well, my original position coming in before hearing discussion was to just let the businesses make their own decision and have some restrictions on it. I kinda converted a little bit when I heard about all the, you know, the hard work and there was a lot more behind it because, I mean, a lot of times, and that's why I was asking about the history of it. Because I don't like to just overturn something that and not know why the decision was made in the first part. Now, I do think there is confusion about the definition of this feather sign that probably should be addressed so we're not sitting here having the same discussion over again.
Well, he's defined it on page two of six.
Oh, I get that, but this is a new ordinance that we're proposing.
Yeah.
So we have a discussion whether or not to say, leave it as it is and forget this ordinance or come up with an ordinance and present it to them, right? That's the two decisions?
Yeah, yeah, I know, and we happen to have, through Tony's work, a, an ordinance already prepared for us.
Yes.
In case we decide to go that way.
Yep, 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 yep.
Yep.
So I think defining that in an ordinance is good, yes.
Yep. Okay, back to you Eugene. Let's go back here and ask you if you've had any new thinking, new thoughts you wanna add.
No, the only other thing is the 30-day period. If nothing does change, for, for me and probably even Southern Charm, 30 days out of the year, that would, that would do. I'm not quite sure what they, how we would do that. Or why would we own what 30 days out of the year? It wouldn't be very... I don't know if that would work for us, just 30 days out of the year.
Mr. Chairman, I can respond to that if you'd like me to. Yeah, I think the intent behind the, when it was originally put into the ordinance, the intent was for like a grand opening or a new business coming in and they needed to have some additional signage to kinda kickstart the business. Or if there was new ownership or just kind of a special event, something like that. It real, I don't think the intent was to have a secondary means of providing signage year-round. So it was more of a special event or something like that, yeah.
So if you feel like you need to, and I'm just bringing this, I'm not arguing against you, I'm just bringing it forward as a fact. So if you feel like that you need these signs continuously, then why not go back to the original clean sign ordinance that we worked hard on and put up a new permanent sign? Something to think about.
Well, I think it depends on where you're, I mean, it's something to think about, but I think it also depends on where your business is located. And where we're located, we get a lot of traffic. And the other flags, they work, people, people read them. So for...
I mean, you're saying they work better than the irregular post or monument sign?
Well, at our particular location, the sign is pretty hot. So if you're driving, you'd actually have to look up to see the signs because it's elevated.
Well, you're allowed to lower it.
Well, it's on a permanent structure, so...
You're allowed to change the permanent structure. Yeah, so, you know, the permanent clean sign that we worked to bring forward in our original ordinance had a height limitation. Didn't have any, well, it has some minimum, I forget what it is. It's gotta be so high off the ground. But that argument, it's a tough case to make. That you can't alter your monument or post signs. You can't. Costs money, but you can. If you can lower it and make it as effective as a banner sign, feather sign, then why not go that way? And get rid of all the flags that we see running up and downtown. We're a flag city now. But it's just a fact, I'm not for it or against it, I'm just telling you a fact. And I didn't mean to reach it out.
No, I understand, I understand.
All right, I kinda messed with Eugene. I'll back off on him a little bit for now. How about you, Stephen? Did you have any new thoughts?
Not any new thoughts, just simply want to say as, as I continue to learn more about the history of the city and the history of the past councils and board, I have to respect those decisions that were made as I continue to learn, those decisions were not made easily. So I respect the past decisions.
Okay, back to you, John Price, any new thoughts?
Well, I, I don't wanna say I agree with you because I'm not sure that you're expressing an opinion, but I did like what you had to say and that was that if the signage is a concern, then why not enhance the permanent signage that's out front, that is, falls within the confines of the ordinance that we have? And if, if, if the sign, if the owners of the sign feel like it's not performing, then within the confines of the, of the ordinance, they could modify that sign. So, you know, to me, a feather sign, we'll call it a feather sign rather than a feather flag, is a quick and easy and inexpensive way to, to advertise a business.
Get your message.
Yep. And, and the rest is just my opinion and at this point, I'm not sure that it's worth expressing. I just, I'm not really in favor of feather flags, feather signs, I'm sorry, feather signs. I remember meetings years back where a feather sign was the topic of discussion. And it was brought out at those meetings that the feather signs were allowed 30 days out of a year. And I think that people walked away from that meeting or from those meetings with that understanding. You know, if feather signs were such a big deal, why don't we have more businesses in the audience expressing a concern about feather signs? So I, you know, that's all.
Okay, thank you. And back to you, Nancy, do you have any new, new thinking?
No, really, I sort of feel the way I did coming into it. I just, as I said, I'm not a fan of them. They don't seem to be maintained in a lot of instances. They're supposed to be 20-foot apart, but you'll see them just lined one next to the, the next one. And no one takes them in at night, and I can understand that. If they're gonna, if we did put something through, they'd have to be certainly more, I don't know how to say it, structurally sounder because these things kinda bend in the wind and they fall down in the wind. I, I made it, I'm a note taker, I'm compulsive about it. My first note was, you have to read the flag ordinance. And I think I do, but I, I really, it just sounds like that we're, it was really well thought out and there were reasons for the things that were, you know, that were put in and left out. So, you know, I'm kind of, that's where I am, I haven't changed a great deal.
So you're saying that we had a good, a rigid or a rigorous sign ordinance?
It seems to be, I really have to...
And the feather flags came by and bypassed it all.
Yeah, I just have to take a look at it. And, you know, on the other hand, as I said, I keep going back because, you know, we want our businesses to thrive. But how did they, hopefully, hopefully, things are getting better. How did they do with, and they seemed to do fine without them before we had this mess, so...
All right, let me ask you a really hard one. Do you as a board wanna have a hearing to get more information or have more facts brought forward on the need for feather signs? Right now, we can make a decision to recommend to the council an ordinance as we have it drafted, maybe with some additional, additional work, but that's additional work. Or we can make a recommendation to prohibit them outright. So I ask it to you that way. Do you want to hand up a recommendation to prohibit them outright? Talk to me, Nancy.
I think if those are the two choices, then yes, I would say I recommend to prohibit them outright. I think we have something in place now that has worked in the past. But that's just my opinion.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a clarifying question?
Yes.
Are you suggesting that we keep the ordinance as is, as it is today? Or are you suggesting that we actually remove the allowance for that 30-day per calendar year to truly ban them outright and there's no, no opportunity to use them?
Good, good, very good. And we would have to talk about, yeah, you'd have to have special occasions to advertise for openings, special events and such.
When I said, when I said that I would vote for it, I meant going back to the way it is or was, the ordinance that's standing there now. Before the exception was made. Yeah, I mean, I, I think that when you're having...
And that's really what I was trying to feel for too. I, I'm struggling with what, which way to go tonight. When we walk out of here, we ought to know what we're gonna do next. Go ahead, Nancy.
No, I think I've said enough, but if we're gonna, you know, may have those two options, and I think they're both good ones, I would say go back to the way we have been with a well-thought-out plan that's in place, that seemed to work. Because the feather signs, while they're eye-catching, they also have other problems with them. And I just don't know if it's worth it. We can't, we don't have the manpower to say get them in or to maintain them or to inspect them.
John?
Well, the ordinance that's in front of us tonight is, it says amending the city's sign code related to feather signs. I'm still not sure that we have a good definition or a good distinction between a banner and a feather sign. If they, if the feather signs are a banner sign or if they're a sign in and of themselves, separate from banner signs.
Yep.
Maybe we need to come up with a clarification there.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman and Mr. Price's response, I mean, that is an option for the board this evening, is to make a recommendation that, I'm not assuming or presuming what you're gonna do, but say if you don't go forward with this ordinance, this board can recommend that a definition, strictly limit your recommendation to, a definition of feather flag needs to be, come up with. And that's your recommendation. So I think there's, it's not, I think we just can't say, well, it's either this or this. I think there's, you have some flexibility.
And then, and then based on that definition, figure out how feather signs or feather, yeah, feather signs would fit into the existing sign ordinance.
I.e. how often they can be used.
Yeah.
Appearance.
Yeah, so we have a thing in front of us on this monitor. It shows different types of feather signs. And if we were gonna allow feather signs, then we probably would wanna consider the dimensions of the signs as well as how frequently they could be displayed and where they could be displayed, that type of thing. We certainly wanna make sure that, I mean, I don't have hard proof on this, but my assumption is, is that a feather sign is there to quickly attract attention. One of the, one of the things that could result from that is that it could distract a driver from driving safely. So, I mean, is there a balance there? How do we, how do we consider that?
Okay.
Is there any proof of that, that it distracts drivers?
I, I don't, I don't have an answer for you.
And I just wanna say one more thing. If we're enforcing, if we have someone enforcing whether or not someone has a flag up or not or whether it's up for 30 days or not, why can't we just enforce whether the flags are well-maintained? Why can't that person do that? Opposed to seeing whether or not, you know, the flags are checked out after five or whatever.
Yeah, I agree with that, but it was you that said that that's a pain. It's a pain to take them in at night, it's a pain to maintain them.
Well, it's not, it's not a pain to maintain them. And maybe that's the wrong word, it's inconvenient to have to, you know, every day, take it out, bring it back in. It's a little inconvenient, but, you know, like, like I said earlier, I'm somewhat, somewhat torn about it too because I saw some flags today that I didn't like, that looked, they looked bad. I think it's more the maintenance of the flag and the condition of the flag. As opposed to you just banning it.
Well, and as our city attorney pointed out, we always, oh, we already have a ordinance for maintenance of signs. We don't have to wrestle that to the ground. You're supposed, you got a sign, you're supposed to maintain it. If you don't maintain it, you get a citation. It's just a matter of enforcement. Well, okay, appearance, we've, I mean, we've already got the solution for that. The crux of the matter is, shall we allow them or not? And if we do allow them, how? Nancy outlined it pretty well. The, what we could do is go back to the original ordinance, allowing feather signs on special occasions for a certain number of days and not continuous. That's a compromise. You can do away with them, then you can, then you've continuously done away with them. Or you can allow them continuously. Either end of the spectrum. The compromise is you can allow them for special occasions and for certain lengths of time. And that's what I'm hearing is that that's what they're for, is to attract attention for certain occasions.
Well, it's in addition to whatever signage is on, on the building. It's an additional.
Yeah. All right. I keep trying to nudge us toward a plan here or a, or a direction. Comrades, do you think we ought to get a group of people in this room and hear some more before we make a recommendation about going back to the original sign ordinance with allowances for feather flags as originally stated? with allowances for feather flags as originally stated? We, talk to me.
Well, I think that, I'm getting the, the feeling that everybody is leaning towards keeping the ordinance as is, and that if there's a special occasion, you can use this feather sign for grand openings, and this and that. I mean, I'm, that's kind of what I've, I've heard, except for you want it to be all the time. I think that, do we need a better definition of a feather sign to clarify in the existing ordinance, not this new one, that's proposed, to clarify that even further? I mean, then, then we, you know, you have a clear definition, you're using it when you need to, and we don't have to come up with a new ordinance. That's what I'm hearing.
So given the definition you've already got written down here as a draft, how would you modify it?
I wouldn't. But there is an existing ordinance, not the one that's in front of us right now, that allows for the feather sign to be used for 30 days a year, consecutively, for a year. What, and I think that's good.
For new businesses, that's good.
Yeah. And, well, so, there was this restriction for the feather sign for only using them for 30 days out of the year before COVID. Right? Businesses flourished. They didn't go out of business because they didn't have a feather sign. The, the, the city council stopped the enforcement of the existing ordinance to try to get the community back up and running, and let everybody know who's, was good. Good decision on that.
Give the merchant a look.
Now that's, now that's done, we're getting back to normal. I mean, do we really need to even change the existing one, or just go ahead and, and let them start enforcing it again?
Yeah, that's, that's the question.
So we either, we either let them start enforcing the existing ordinance, or we come up with this new one that says you can use, you know, you don't have a timeframe, and you have all of these rules, and, you know, how many feet you can set it apart, and, you know, and, and as far as like where you guys are at Southern Charm, you know, there's a five-foot setback from the road. So I don't know if the existing signs are five feet actually back out. So where, where your sign is now, you may not be able to be in the future.
Feather signs have to obey setbacks.
Yeah, yeah. So I'm, me personally, I'm leaning towards now just keeping everything as is, and let everybody start enforcing it. So that way, if you have a grand opening, or a special occasion, you have a special event, you can put your feather sign up. That's my two cents.
How about you, Stephen? You got anything to add to that position?
Not really, I feel the, I feel very much the same way. Your ordinance wasn't broken, and like it's sound, and 30 days is fine. What I hate to see is, you've got several businesses all together in one small spot, and everybody puts one of these signs out there. Another high sore in our town. Staying up for extended period of time till they wear, wear out. I just, I just don't think that's a good tactic.
Okay. We'll come back to you if you have another, other thoughts. How about you, John, you?
Well, I, I personally like the definition of feather sign that we have here. The only thing that I would add to that, for the sake of conformity, and it's not under definition, but in, in the ordinance, for the sake of conformity, establish dimensions that would have to be adhered to for these signs. So that, you know, you wouldn't have great big gawky signs next to little, you know, that kind of thing, conformity. But, but once again, you know, if in fact, a feather sign, that's what I'm confused about at this point. If in fact, a feather sign is definitely included into the existing sign ordinance, I haven't, I mean, I haven't seen anybody really complain about that. So, I, I, I think the ordinance is a good ordinance.
Okay. Based on the discussion, I'm starting to think about a different, like an alternative approach. Because the current, the current sign code, as I mentioned, feather sign is included in the definition of banner sign. There's no special definition for feather sign, it's just encompassed in the banner sign definition. So, the banner, the, the feather sign today, if you would keep the code the same, and this temporary suspension on enforcement goes by the wayside, so feather signs would be treated just like banners. So when you go then and look at the code regarding the regulation of banners, a feather sign has to adhere, you know, to those general banner sign requirements. For example, you know, there's only a maximum of one banner sign that can be erected on non-residential property, not to exceed 96 square feet. Right? And, you know, in various general provisions. But those provisions are not specific to feather signs. So there are, as I see it, there are three, three approaches. One, the, one is the, something similar to the draft ordinance that's on the agenda. The other is a recommendation that you, we do not adopt a special ordinance for feather flags, and leave the code the same. The third alternative, which I hadn't really thought about until I heard the discussion tonight, is you can treat feather signs like banner signs, but maybe it deserves its own definition, and some regulations regarding the characteristics of, of feather sign. It may not be treated exactly like a banner sign. It could be treated similar to a banner sign, but not exactly the same. Where they're not authorized permanently every single day, they're more treated like a banner sign in terms of time, would be, would be a third alternative. I don't know how you get there tonight on the third alternative, because you really would need to have a restyled agenda item where you can see, here are the existing banner regulations, here's a proposed definition of feather sign, so, you know, do we need anything in addition to regulate characteristics of a feather sign, and treat them similar to banner signs in terms of time? Does that make sense?
We do not have to make a decision tonight.
You do not have to make a decision, but we could bring back additional information on banner signs, so you can kind of look at it a little bit more holistically, if you're not inclined to have something like what's been presented, or you just want to leave the code the same. What I'm saying is, there might be a middle-road third, third option. Maybe tweak the code relative to characteristics of feather signs, but treat them similar in terms of how often they can be displayed like a banner sign. Does that make sense? I mean.
Yeah. And I think in order to be fair, that's probably the right way to go.
I agree.
Before we make a permanent and final decision, we certainly ought to give that a, a look, I think.
Kick the tires, Mr. Chairman, something like that.
Yeah, yeah, that's exactly where I was going with the permission of the board to go to option three, and let you think about that, my subject, write something for us, bring it forward to us. And at the same time, well, it'll give the merchant a chance to come forward and present their case. And that, in that same meeting, they can present their case for more or less feather sign. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I think what I'll also suggest is, I'm gonna go back and look at some of the documents that, as I mentioned earlier, we had got, we had gone through some negotiations with specifically the owner of Southern Charm, and the owner of the Subway store. And we, we had talked about, we'd gone, there were some give and take. We had opened up not just 30 days, but we had opened that up a little bit for some additional consideration for the use of these. And then we actually went to a permit process. Hey, you're gonna, you're gonna, we're gonna issue you a permit for this, for this banner sign. And if you don't abide by the ban, the conditions, maintenance, bringing it in after, you're not gonna get, you're not, you're not, your permit's gonna get revoked, and you're not gonna get another permit. So there's, there's ways to enforce this, that I think, my point is, I think there may be some other things that we can throw out to the board that may be worthy of some further discussion and, and consideration. So I'll work with Anthony.
For example, I mean, it's no secret, when you go down A1A, we have multi-tenant storefronts. Okay, so if you read the banner sign literally, it's, you know, it's really one banner sign, you know, and if, for, for a given year. And it doesn't really call out that if you have a multi-tenant storefront, well, if you have four businesses, they may each want to put a feather flag up at the same time. How do they do something like that under the current code? I don't, the code doesn't specifically address that type of situation. It would, and, and, and secondly, the code doesn't really address what you see on the screen here tonight. Right? Banners can be up to 96 square feet.
Right.
I don't think any of those banners are 96 square feet, if I did the math, right? It's like not even half. You know, you may want to put limitations on, on, on flag signs, based on what you see here. It could be six by two might be the maximum, or eight by two. You know, it's different than a banner. Couple of things that you probably want to think about at the next meeting.
Okay. What I'd like to propose is to, first, I don't want you to leave here totally confused and disheartened about getting there. We're in the middle of a process. And I went to a charm, management charm school once upon a time, about problems and uncertainty and solutions. And problems, they go through phases. You have the problem, or lots of problems, they all get brought forward, which we're doing tonight. You talk about them. You talk about them some more, and I've seen people get up and leave meetings because they can't stand it. But you have to understand where you are in the process. We are now in the middle of uncertainty, and we are entertaining ideas. And we have to leave here with the faith that the best ideas will surface. We'll get there. We'll get, ever, we'll have, everybody will have a chance to make their case. Nobody's left out. So, having said that, we'll, we'll move forward with the action that the staff and the city attorney will go away and think about these ideas, and bring forward that option three with whatever good ideas you think need to be added as you work the problem. Where, whose is that? Okay. Go away and give us, come back with the, the ideas, where was I?
He wants you to come back at least.
Go away, but come back, you'll be dismissed.
All right.
There's, there's a reason for the admonition, put your phasers on stun.
I second your motion.
So, I think you understand what you need to do. Bring it back to us in, uh, re- written next time, 'cause I don't know when that'll be. And we'll keep working it. That's where we are, we're working the problem. Anything else that anybody would like to add, or any strong point you'd like to make on exiting the evening? How about you, Eugene? You, you have taken on the representation of the merchants, and that's fair. We like that. You, you think we're heading in the right direction?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we'll give everybody, everybody a chance to come back and make their points. All right, I'm seeing agreement on the approach. Is there any further business to come before the board tonight?
I'll just make one announcement, is that we've got a couple of community workshops coming up here in the next month. One is our, we're, you know, the city is establishing a new vision document. The last one was back in, I think, 2000, it's been a while.
Yeah.
So, so please get involved in that, if, if you're so fond of it. And also, we're getting ready to start a big project. We're gonna be doing a master plan for the Presidential Streets area. And we're going to have a, there's gonna be a community workshop in February. I don't recall the specific date.
Are, are you gonna have that as a hearing in the chamber, or you're gonna put it over in the hotel?
That's a good question, I don't recall.
Well, no, we, we did the visioning in the hotel. People got to walk around and stick up stickers on what they thought.
So my point is, be looking for those things, and, and please get involved, if you, if you like. They're both important elements.
All right, thank you. Anything else? All right, I'd like to hear a motion to adjourn.
I make the motion to adjourn, that's Susan Denny.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right.
Nancy, you have a call.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned.